Call the meeting to a please name for the flag slip. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the best law with liberty and justice for all.
The public notice that this meeting pursuant to the open public meeting act has been given in the following manner: by emailing written notice to the Courier-Post in retrospect on January tenth, two thousand nineteen; by posting written notice on the official bulletin board at the municipal building on January tenth, two thousand nineteen; by filing written notice with the clerk of the borough of Lynn on January tenth, two thousand nineteen.
Provo.
Mr. Chouaki?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Mr. Torres?
She is on her way. I hear on time tonight. Let me take her over.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mrs. Feliciano?
She's on.
And Mr. Early?
Here.
And Mayor Fuentes?
Here.
At this point now, we start out with, if you're ready to report, we'll start out with finance. Mr. Fuentes?
Good evening, Mayor. Speaker, 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 any question? Full vote?
Mr. Chouaki?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Mr. Torres?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
President Early?
Oh, yes. At this point now, we move forward with buildings and property. Council?
Good evening, Mayor. Councilor, members of council, residents. My report for, I have a report for two months that I'm giving, one month that we're unable to present our report, which was the month of May and the month of June. For the month of May, we have a total of hall rentals, hall rental for Zuma, Molina, Karen Miller, for Ricky Hernandez, and for R.R. Smith. The total for that month came up to five hundred and fifty dollars for the month of May. And for the month of June, we have a total of two hall rentals for four fifty, Patty, Patsy Jackson, and the Democratic Club for a hundred dollars totaling five fifty for the month of June, excuse me, the month of May, I'm sorry. So we have, should be April, I'm looking at, yeah, April and May, excuse me. So other than that, that's my report for the month of April and May.
You heard the report of building and property. Can I get a motion, Secretary of State, to file?
Motion.
Motion by Fuentes. Second by Chouaki. Any question? Full vote?
Mr. Chouaki?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs... Okay, President Early? Sorry.
Oh, yes. At this point, we now start with emergency management. Councilman Chouaki?
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Members of council, solicitors, council members, council president, and our here residents. This is the report for May twenty nineteen emergency management. We received a total call of seventy-seven calls. Distribution of that, eighteen of those calls is for the fire call and fifty-nine of those is for EMS. In comparison from last month to the month of May, we increased by five calls. Respectively, fire call decreased and EMS increased. Fire call decreased by minus seven calls and EMS increased by two. Percentage in overall increase and decrease based on the previous month of April, we have a six-point ninety-four percent increase in the volume. However, throughout the whole county, the highest call being Camden City and the lowest call being Pine Valley. And in comparison to them with Woodland, Woodland is like two percent of the highest call counties get. So the way we low, Pine Valley is like zero. This is the report for the month of May for emergency management.
You heard the report, emergency management. Can I get a motion, Secretary of State, to file? Motion by council. Just for the record, Councilwoman Feliciano came in. Motion by Councilwoman Feliciano? Second by Councilman Fuentes. Any question? Full vote?
Mr. Chouaki?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Feliciano? President Early?
Yes.
Oh, yes. At this point now, we start with Councilwoman Feliciano with Public Repair and Recreation. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of council and the public. This is my report for the month of May. First of all, I'd like to thank the children from Woodland School for helping out with Earth Day by planting and cleaning up. I also want to thank those who participated in this year's Memorial Day service. It was a very beautiful service that we had, and I appreciate everybody that came out and supported our men and women in our service and those that have given their lives for our country. At this time, I will be going over the plans for this upcoming July Fourth service as we celebrate the Fourth of July, and we plan on presenting some more information or flyers as we get closer to the Fourth of July. This is my report for the month of May.
You heard the report of Public Repair and Recreation. Can I get a motion, Secretary of State, to file?
Motion.
Motion by Council President Early. Second by Councilman Chouaki. Any question? Full vote?
Mr. Chouaki?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Feliciano?
Yes.
President Early?
Yes.
Oh, yes. At this point, we move forward with DPW, Public Repair and Recreation.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of council and members of the public. This is the Public Works Report for the month of May twenty nineteen, excuse me. For recycling, week number one, we had eight thousand one hundred and sixty pounds or four-point zero eight tons. Week number two, eight thousand eight hundred and eighty pounds or four-point four-four tons. Week number three, eight thousand nine hundred and twenty pounds or four-point four-six tons. Week number four, eleven thousand one hundred pounds or five-point five-five tons. Total recycling was thirty-seven thousand and sixty pounds or eighteen-point five-three tons. For trash, week number one, forty-six thousand two hundred and sixty pounds or twenty-three-point thirteen tons. Week number two, fifty-three thousand four hundred and forty pounds or twenty-six-point seven-two tons. Week number three, fifty-two thousand sixty pounds or twenty-six-point zero-three tons. Week four, fifty-two thousand five hundred and twenty pounds or twenty-six-point twenty-six tons. Week number five, fifty thousand eight hundred and sixty pounds or twenty-five-point four-three tons. Total trash is two hundred and fifty-five thousand one hundred and forty pounds or one hundred and twenty-seven-point five-seven tons. Yard waste, week number one, there were six. Week two, there were two. Week number three, four. Week number four, five. And week number five, six-point-five. Total yard waste was twenty-three-point-five yards. This was respectfully submitted by Robert Keeney. This is the report for the month of May for Public Works. And I also wanted to add on a side note, currently looking into two different companies whose venue specializes in partnering up with townships to pick up electronics where the credits would come back to the township. They are either free or low cost. When I get the remaining information, I have two companies, and I can have an apples-to-apples comparison. I will present everything to council and let us know when we can get moving on that. Thank you for this morning's report. Thank you.
You heard the report of Public Work. Can I get a motion, Secretary of State, to file?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman, second by Councilwoman Feliciano. Any question? Full vote?
Mr. Chouaki?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Feliciano?
Yes.
President Early?
Yes.
Oh, yes. At this point here, we now move forward with, it's an introduction only, handicap introduction ordered as twenty nineteen dash seven, and ordered as amended chapter eighty-seven of the Code of Borough Woodland County of Kansas State of New Jersey, entire park and handicap. Can I get a motion, second?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Chouaki?
Second.
Second by Councilman Fuentes. Any question? Full vote?
Mr. Chouaki?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Feliciano?
Yes.
President Early?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Ordered as twenty nineteen dash eight, introduction by title only, and ordered as amended chapter eighty-seven of the Code of Borough Woodland County of Kansas State of New Jersey, entire park and handicap. Can I get a motion, second?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Cook?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman, Council President Early. Any question? Full vote?
Mr. Chouaki?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Feliciano?
Yes.
President Early?
Yes.
More questions? Ordered as twenty nineteen dash nine, introduction by title only, and ordered as amended chapter eighty-seven of the Code of Borough Woodland County of Kansas State of New Jersey, entire park and handicap. Can I get a motion, second?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Chouaki? Second by Councilwoman Feliciano. Any question? Full vote?
Mr. Chouaki?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Feliciano?
Yes.
President Early?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Ordered as twenty nineteen dash ten, introduction by title only, and ordered as amended chapter eighty-seven of the Code of Borough Woodland County of Kansas State of New Jersey, entire park and handicap. Can I get a motion, second?
Motion.
Second by Councilman Chouaki. Second by Councilman Fuentes. Any question?
It is. It is still part of the handicap. What this is, is provided for permanent parking space. This is introduction. This is for permanent parking space, which anybody needs within the zoning area of a church, within a hundred feet from a church, municipal building, commercial, or school. Is the cost for the entire?
Thirty dollars will be for the additional plate that they will pay.
And they're not going to pay anything for the?
No, they still get it as free right now. There's no cost free. But what's happening, and I have to say, some people have come up to me and say that because when there's mass going on, there's some of the parking space has been taken. Also, people have said to me that when there's a borough function, parking space has been taken. So it is just to give them the option that if they want to get the personal one, then they can go for it. Any other question? And full vote?
Mr. Chouaki?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Feliciano?
Yes.
President Early?
Yes.
All these orders that we just called on the line will be for final adoption at the next month's meeting. Resolution twenty nineteen dash forty-seven, a resolution of Borough Woodland County of Kansas State of New Jersey, hiring and appointing a CLEO, class two. Forty-six. Apologize. Forty-six. Appointing a new CEO to class two office for Borough Woodland. Can I get a motion, second?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Feliciano. Second by Councilman Chouaki. Any question?
Yes. Was post enlisted in a public page with online website, employee employment website, and on a borough's website as well?
Doesn't have to be posted right now. We're a NEO officer, and there was, there were individuals that did apply for the position. This will cut down on overtime. This will also put more manpower on the street.
Was this what the civil service was?
It's not a full-time position. It is a class-two position. It's not a civil service. Any other question?
No.
Full vote?
Mr. Chouaki?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Feliciano?
Yes.
President Early?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Resolution twenty nineteen dash forty-seven, a resolution of permanent block party for the two-hundred block of Cypress Avenue of Borough Woodland. Can I get a motion, second?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Chouaki?
Second.
Second by Councilman Fuentes. Any question? Full vote?
Mr. Chouaki?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Feliciano?
Yes.
President Early?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Resolution twenty nineteen dash forty-seven, a resolution of permanent block party for the two-hundred block of Cypress Avenue of Borough Woodland. Can I get a motion, second?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Chouaki?
Second.
Second by Councilman Fuentes. Any question? Full vote?
Mr. Chouaki?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Feliciano?
Yes.
President Early?
Yes.
At this point here, motion to approve the bill. Motion by Councilman Chouaki?
Second.
Second by Councilman Fuentes. Any question? Full vote?
Mr. Chouaki?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Feliciano?
Yes.
President Early?
Yes.
Oh, yes. At this point, any other new business? Okay, at this point, I open it up to the public. Please state your name and address.
Welcome, everyone. I am Jeff Goodwin, 315 Cypress. I have a few things to bring up. First, we had a recent campaign. One of the things that I campaigned on was the intersection safety at Cooper... at Cooper and Woodland and Palton and Woodland. It's an unsafe intersection, does not meet any type of standard, there's zero sight distance, and we had suggested...
Cooper, I'm sorry, what's that? Cooper and what did you say?
Cooper and Woodland and Palton and Woodland.
Cooper and Woodland.
I'm sorry, I misspoke. It's Parker and Woodland and Palton and Woodland.
Parker and Woodland?
Yes, and Palton and Woodland. When you go up to those intersections, you cannot see anything from the stop bar, let alone two-hundred feet in either direction. So we had suggested about putting stop signs at those intersections, and I'm here to ask if the council is agreeable to looking into that and implementing those suggestions.
We will look at that and have our engineer take a look at it and make recommendations to the public.
Okay, is that something that can happen before the next meeting?
I can't, I can't assure you.
Okay.
You have to check everything. So engineers, you can...
Are the engineers still, I heard, regularly overseeing the construction of Third Street?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm assuming they could take five minutes to go look at that.
Okay. I don't like to assume.
Okay. At the last council meeting on May ninth, Councilman Chouaki actually asked me what ideas I had to address the fact that Woodland has the highest tax rate in all of New Jersey. One idea I mentioned was creating redevelopment rehabilitation zones to help provide economic incentives in what would be those areas. At that meeting, Mayor, you said that I should come visit you and that you would show me the redevelopment areas. You said that the borough has two of them, and also anything else I wanted to see. I did come and visit you the following Monday. You, you know, did not have access to these plans or the Borough Master Plan, and you said you would contact me, you would look for them and contact me. I've not been contacted. I've also sent you three emails.
I haven't seen those three emails. I know there was one that you had sent, and obviously you were busy. We've seen each other several times, you never mentioned anything to me, but...
Well, you were going to get back to me. I followed up with an email.
But I understand, we, we seen each other several times, and that wants you to mention anything, but go ahead.
Okay, well, again, you had committed to getting back to me.
And I'll get it for you, no problem.
Okay, well, I had sent you an email the other day suggesting you bring them to the meeting tonight.
No problem.
Can I ask, if you, can you bring them to the next?
You'll get a copy tonight's meeting, after the meeting, you'll get a copy.
A copy of the redevelopment?
Yes.
Plans?
Well, these areas that we cited for redevelopment, the economic redevelopment area and master plan, okay?
So after the meeting tonight, you will do that? I'm just, because if, I don't think the meeting's going to go too long, perhaps we could take a recess, you can get them and bring them up here if that works.
I'll give it to you after the meeting. You're not going to do nothing. We're not going to do anything.
Okay, I'm sorry, what did you say, Council President?
No, I said...
No, no, I asked Council President.
She said. I said. You heard my comment. What I said is, you need to give us a chance, give that to you.
Okay.
Okay?
Well, that's why I came a month ago to try to get that, but I appreciate that.
Okay, so sometimes things don't happen right away, so when we're done meeting...
Okay, well, that's why I came to bring it up again.
And we'll be able to give it to you, okay?
Thanks. I had a question. Does the borough have a chief financial officer?
Yes, we do.
Who would that be?
Michael Quazier.
I'm sorry?
Michael Quazier.
Michael Quazier?
Why wouldn't the borough have a chief financial officer?
I just asked the question.
Well, I'm just saying, I mean, every borough has one.
I didn't know the answer. I honestly looked on the website. Well, let me, let me, you ask, let me answer. I looked on the website, the website had no information about it. I was just curious to see if the borough had a chief financial officer. I asked the question, it was answered. Thank you.
Every borough has one.
Okay, and then, lastly, I just wanted to ask, since, you know, the mayor is stepping down and presumably Mr. Chouaki will be the new mayor, the borough will not have an administrator come January, and I just wanted to kind of know what the plan was to, and the process to hire a new administrator.
Well, I think council will have to sit down and digest that and go over the plan.
Okay, is that something the solicitor will be involved with also? In terms of the process?
I don't know. We'll have to sit down and see where the process will go.
Okay, I guess at what point can that process and not, at what point can that be shared with the community?
At this point here, what it will be, where it will be council's decision on how they're going to move forward with that, okay?
Okay, but can I just ask if it's the council's intention so that in the January meeting, there is the position, the ordinance to create the position has been created, and therefore the position can be filled?
And I'm sure, I'm sure council will take the proper action that needs to be done.
Okay, well, can, I'll ask you again next month then. Thank you.
One more, wait, one more question for you.
Sure.
Actually, to clarify to the board and everybody, there is a difference between a tax rate, rate, and the real estate tax that you pay, okay? Yes, Woodland have, they have this tax rate, which is seven, in the county.
In the state, sorry.
In the state, all right? But the real estate tax of Woodland is not even on the pathie percentile of the whole New Jersey. Now, how do you calculate tax rate is a point? It is, how much is your house, and how much do you pay on tax? You divide it, you multiply by a hundred, takes you what the rate is, but this is just a tax rate. It has nothing to do with the real estate tax that you're paying, but rather, they use your real estate tax because the houses might be sold lower, or maybe mediocre, maybe fifty-thousand, and we're paying tax that is about five thousand. You divide that, it aligns towards that seven percent tax rate. Compared to Cherry Hill, where you have a house that may be two-hundred thousand dollars, and where you are paying about maybe seven thousand in real estate tax, and if you divide that, it brings you a rate, look. So I just wanted to understand, that's a difference between tax rate and what your real estate tax is.
Yes, and during the whole time, we've never said Woodland had the highest taxes, it's had the highest tax rate, which is something that prohibits and decentifies business and development in the community, and that's what I've been pushing, the values are too low, and in order to bring those values up, creating redevelopment rehabilitation areas to give economic incentives is generally a good practice.
Well, generally it's a good practice, but also it could be a big backfire on the taxpayer, because when you decide you want to do this kind of plan, master plans and design, that you want to do economic redevelopment, okay, when you don't have developers going out there and you want to come in and develop, okay, who's going to pay the difference of that? The taxpayers are going to make the difference on that, okay? Because not everybody's out there right now rushing to build and build, okay? So what you can say, I can design and have somebody come in and say, here's a great master plan, and take twenty thousand dollars of taxpayer money, but yet nothing's being done. That sits there and sits there and sits there. You know, I'm not going to gamble taxpayers' money, okay? You know, I'm not gonna gamble taxpayers' money, okay? I can see when this economy had crashed, we looked at what we needed to do. The key thing first was working with public safety and making sure that our police department was gonna be doing their job, making sure that we're gonna have safety for the residents, one. Two, we looked into property maintenance, vacant properties, we worked on that, 54 homes were sold last year, and right now people are buying houses in Woodland, they're investing in Woodland. So therefore, we're moving in the right direction. When you're talking about safety, house, nobody's gonna want to build or come in and say, I want to invest in a town that's not safe, or in a town that's a ghost town. People want to see that it's a town that is moving. This is a nice town, people will come in here, so we're in the right step in stone. I also had asked our engineer Steve Bach to come in next work session to sit down with council and to the public, to get a real clear understanding, because Steve has done many municipalities, and he's been doing this for a long time, and he'll tell you, you know what, not everybody's rushing to go ahead and build, so let's not gamble taxpayers' money to say we can come up with a master plan, because I could say, we put a beautiful master plan and put $20,000, and yet nobody will touch it, but guess who's paying for this? The taxpayers paying for it. So I understand what you're saying, but it is a gamble, and I'm not gonna gamble this. Now, if the next mayor wants to take that change and look at that, then that will owe me, that'll be the next mayor's decision. But at this point, the way the economy is, we're working first on safety, rehabbing, infrastructure, then we can address with businesses, okay?
May I just suggest, since you don't have a tremendous amount of experience with redevelopment, it is a good idea to bring somebody, Steve Bach-
Well, you can't say I don't have a tremendous amount of experience, okay? You don't know what my experience is.
Okay, well, tell, explain to me what experience you have in that.
I've been 20, I've been here 25 years-
I taught redevelopment.
So what I'm gonna say to you is, we're gonna sit down next work session with our engineer, and you're welcome to come, and we will hear some feedback, and we can go from there, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, last time you came, you talked about this has nothing to do with the school, correct?
I'm sorry?
The taxes, 7%, doesn't have nothing to do with the school.
I don't think I said it had nothing to do with the school. I just said that the school is not the problem in terms of the high tax rate.
Okay, let me ask you something.
As Mr. Chouakie said, the problem is the values of the houses, not the taxes themselves.
No, let me-
So, so-
Go ahead, I'm sorry. Let me tell you something, okay? I went to Collinswood to investigate, I went different township, yeah, some township has 3.5, 4.2% tax rate, okay? Which is low, but if you go to these townships like Mr. Chouakie said, they are pricing at 280,325, which-
One second, one second, please.
Which they are collecting, like one house, right? They're collecting like $11,000 in taxes at 3.5, because the rate of the house they have over there is $320,000.
So why are their houses 320, ours are 30?
Let me finish. Some of those houses, right? Okay, their tax money they collect, right? Now, Collinswood collects money from us to pay for the kids, to cover some of that expensive, they also cover Oakland's school, to cover that expensive, so they're getting a lot of money from us and from Oakland to cover. Woodland Township, right? We are paying over $2 million a year, am I correct?
We pay $196,000 a month.
A month, a year, over?
I gotta calculate it.
Yeah, if you add that, it's over, okay? We have to have, and we have to pay, get that money to pay them, because we have to, as an obligation that we have to pay. We don't have no control. Every time they go up, another $54, or another, say they, we're only going up in a month, $68. You add up in a year, it's close to $1,000 in taxpayers' money that we have to pay, okay? That's how it works, okay? Because when the, over here in school is asking for money that the state is not covering, we have to cover that. That's how it is.
But you don't think there's a lot of districts in the 565 have a better tax rate than us? That are sending districts?
Let's just go back on this here, Jeff, it's like you said, okay? It's not the highest tax, it's on what the value of that house-
It's the value, our values are already taken.
Let me explain to you, that's what I just said earlier. Hear me clear, is we are working on infrastructure, we're working on safety, and we're working on homes. We are working on homes so these properties can be sold, and then, while they go permits, these properties will be assessed again, and then they will be at the value where they will be at. So hopefully the market will continue to grow on, so we are working on that. That is the key plan right there on these houses. So let's not go out there and say Woodland has the highest taxes.
I never said it had the highest taxes. I always said it had the highest tax rate. I was very clear about that.
Okay, but you know what, there were others that said taxes, so you know, I'm not gonna make it political, but I'm not gonna go into it, so I'm just gonna say to you, I heard you, next month, we're gonna start and see what we can do with our engineer, and hopefully we can address some of that.
Well, I think it's a great idea having a professional planner, who, Mr. Bach is also a professional planner-
I agree, that's why-
Come in and discuss those type of items, but I get back to what Councilman Fuentes, where he's talking about where there, these other communities, their houses are all 300,000. We need to look at why Woodland is, we have a, we have a PATCO station here, there is-
We don't have a PATCO station.
Oh, come on.
That's Kansas.
We get the benefit of having a PATCO station at our doorstep, whether it's in the municipality or not.
You have the benefit, but let's, let's set it straight now, just like you said, how do you say tax rate?
You're splitting hairs off, okay?
No, 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 let's, let's be, let's be frank, the way it is.
Yeah, but, but again, we need to, we need to have open eyes about why Woodland's-
And like I said to you, nobody-
Values are so low.
Nobody, no business are investing at this point here, there are not people that are invested.
Right, I agree with that.
According to Steve and his expertise, they're not investing. So why would I take taxpayer money and gamble on something that is not gonna fly right now? Let's do the other work that needs to be done first, let's walk, let's crawl before we walk, and let's walk before we run, okay? So we're taking those proper steps, okay? If you want to address it in another time, in a year, to see where we're at, more welcome. But I welcome you next week, so we can sit down as we come with a plan to see what else we can do.
Yeah, well, Mr. Bach, you're out, we can discuss that then.
Very good, thank you.
I also have a question.
Hold on, let me just get to the public first. Anyone else on the public? Please state your name.
Melissa Bump, 215 Palton. Real quick on the taxes, I just, I know everyone's talking about redevelopment and master planning, but I think what the problem is, is what we pay in taxes does not equal the quality of life in Woodland. I pay $6,400 a year, and I have a drug dealer across the street, dirt bikes down the street, someone got stabbed two months ago, like, it's just, if I picked up my house and put it in Kramer Hill, I'd pay $2,500 a year. So what justifies me paying $6,400 a li, a year to live in Woodland? That's the problem, because the houses are selling for 10, 15, 20, 30,000, and no one in this room is gonna tell me they're not, because I've been pulling sale prices for a year.
Let's just say, let's just say something about this, Melissa, with all respect, is what you're saying, your $6,400 that you pay-
Correct.
Okay, you have to see what your local taxes are, what your county-
No, I understand that, I'm just saying overall, Jerry, let me finish. Overall, out of my annual salary for working, I spend $6,400 a year to live here, to live here, and if I toss the ball, it lives, it lands in Camden. If my house was on the other side of the cemetery, I would pay $2,000 a year, that's what I'm trying to say. I understand, I've lived here for 17 years, I understand county tax, school tax, whatever, I, I get it. But what people are trying to tell you is, we're saying the taxes are high, and the way I feel, and I think many people feel, is it's high for the amenities we get, it's high for the, the way the neighborhood looks, it's just, it's high. No one's gonna sit here and say it's not high. I don't care how it's calculated, it's not worth it. If I tried to sell my house and put it on the market, it's not gonna sell for the sales price, because someone has to get a mortgage approved for that sales price, and when you go to a bank to get a mortgage, they pull things called comps, and they're gonna look at other houses in Woodland in the same square footage that sold. I would never buy a house in Woodland right now, knowing I had to pay $6,400 in taxes, if I knew what I knew 11 years ago when I bought it. That's just the point. You need to look at how to lower the taxes. And I understand it's the school and the county, but there's also municipal taxes that you can review to try to-
Which, which we did a zero taxing, we used the last year issue.
I, I've been said at this meeting, I know that.
I understand, but we have to phrase-
But have we worked to try to lower the taxes?
I, I understand that, but I think by starting at a point, by saying not increasing, that's a start.
That's a start, but we're halfway through the year, have you started working to try to lower?
Like I said, that's, that's the start.
Okay, six months in.
We're ready to do the budget.
I made six mortgage payments and six property taxes.
Now, I'm gonna explain something to you, regardless the house sells for 10, 20,000, that does not still devalue the assessed value of the property.
No, it hurts me at closing when I have to cut a check to the buyer because I can't sell it for the right price, because of the neighborhood, that's all I'm saying, so I'll move on to my other questions, because it's not Cherry Hill, it ain't Zepford, it's Camden. I would like to request to have the chief parking sign removed from Palton Avenue, being that he lives in Oakland, so we can free that up for the residents on my block. And then, I'd like to see if we can add a second stop sign or an extra large stop sign on Evergreen, at that cut through where the school is, I park there every day at 2:30, today 12 cars went through that stop sign without stopping.
When you're saying on Evergreen?
People come down Ferry, I don't know where they're coming from, they come down Evergreen, there's a stop sign in the middle of that street where the side street where the school is.
On Front Street, so on Front and Evergreen, or you're talking about-
On Evergreen.
Or Al.
So if you're going from Ferry to Woodland Avenue-
On the Front Street?
In the middle of Evergreen.
That's Front Street.
No, you're on Evergreen, Front Street is the cross street.
So you're saying, that's what I'm saying, it stops-
Correct.
From Evergreen where it stops the front, so the stop sign is there.
Correct, there is a stop sign, but nobody stops, and if I could write tickets, I could imagine just about $900 at 2:30. So if, I mean, if it's not expensive, I know I just told you to cut taxes, I'll pay for the stop sign, I don't care. Like, that's literally, I sit there every day, and there's at least 10 cars in the five minutes that I sit there. I know school's out, but someone's gonna get hit. And then I'd like an update on the house at 106 Chestnut that caught on fire two years ago. It still hasn't been demolished, I know we put pieces of wood up, but every time it rains like this, more of it crumbles, and this is a part of the reason why the neighborhood looks the way it does.
There is a process it takes, unfortunately, that was under investigation. The construction official already deemed it unsafe, that that needs to be taken down. We are, we are notifying the owners to take action on it, be able to comply with that, then what would happen on two options, what would happen once would be, is also to cite them and see where they understand. If they can't remove it, then what will happen, then, because of the unsafe structure, the borough will take it down, and we will put a lien on the problem.
Okay, it's been over two years, do you know if, and they've already been fined? Can you pull that, please? Like, I'm assuming that, like, the code enforcer would be-
Not the code enforcer, the construction official.
So for two years-
There was other investigation.
I understand that. Would now prefer Camden to take it down a week.
An investigation do take time.
I understand.
So at that point there, it was given to the construction official to follow through, and he has signed this clarification, and he has done the protocol that needs to be done. If you want to speak about it, to it, you're more than welcome. Dave Munoz, he's here on Thursday between 9 and 12.
No, that's fine, I asked last year, so I just want to make sure I'm keeping it on public record, so if someone does get hurt, they can sue the borough.
We did, we did our part, so they can't, you know, put it in the system well.
No, not really, but, okay, thank you.
We did our part, so we're covered.
The kids will have a safety cover on that block, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Anyone else?
Kelly from Kelski, 128, I have a question about the borough, would the gutters, are they, you wanna put gutters up?
That's what else, Mr. Cook's responsibility.
Put the gutters up?
Yep.
He's in charge of building the property.
Okay, Mr. Cook, why don't you put the gutters up?
This is my ears, um, yes, I am in charge over buildings and grounds, I will address council as far as when can we proceed with doing so, but at the end, the building does need a lot of maintenance on the outside, just as much as it does on the inside. We do see, you know, the, the dire need to have power washing done to, you know, presentation is just not there.
Well, I was curious about the gutters, because I mean, they, they require us residents to have gutters, so the borough should do it.
Yes, my, I agree.
I have, when you leave a parked car in your yard, we have to cover it, and it seems like there's five bagels that have been sitting down in the yard at the borough there, are they gonna be sold, or are you gonna cover them, like, we have to cover?
They're, they're gonna go up for the auction.
They're gonna go up for auction, but they don't have to be covered, so that's, you still have to cover things on your residence?
They're, they're in the yard, which is covered by the fence.
Well, we're, we have ours in the yard covered by a fence, but we have to put a cover, car cover on.
Yours is because it interferes with the neighboring, with the direct neighbor on the house.
And that doesn't interfere with the neighbors when they look out and see all these cars in here, it's like a junkyard.
It's not, it's not a direct towards the neighbor.
Well, I've seen other neighbors complain about it a little.
Well, this is news to me.
Okay.
But yes, if you're bringing it up, property maintenance, it does need addressing. As the front step needs to be painted, as the gutter needs to be, as Councilman Cook mentioned, power washing has to be done. It is his responsibility to address the matter and bring it up and say, well, I need the guys to set this up, a bucket of paint doesn't cost much, just set it up, put what you need, and then we go from there.
When's the auction for the car?
We will, we put it at the next month meeting, so go ahead and do the auction. Right now, we are wait, not I don't say exactly next month, it might not be next month, because that's July, we are gonna sit down with Belmar when they do their auction, so what happens is, instead of us just doing a solo auction, it's better to do a big massive auction where people will come out. So Belmar normally holds one, so I gotta find out exactly when Belmar has theirs.
Deborah Williams, 136 Allen Avenue, I have two questions. One is, what is the noise ordinance for loud music, from when can it go on and to how late?
Well, music, it could be at any point as a noise ordinance, if it's disrupting, then obviously they can call the cops, and the cops will go over there and tell them that they need to keep it down. Now, again, there are different noise ordinance, like if it's construction, they're limited to some.
Well, it's not construction.
Well, I'm just gonna say, as, as I'm saying, construction is seven to seven, now, if it's music that be played, or, or whatever it might be as far as noise, that could be at any time to call the police, to say that there is a complaint of noise.
Okay.
There's not a particular time to say, you can put your radio blasting at 3 o'clock in PM. Now, if it's disrupting, it's still a noise ordinance-
Well, if you live a block away, over on Evergreen, and I live in the corner, and it's in the middle, I shouldn't be able to hear all that music, all day and all night long.
Well, again, anyone can call the cops.
Okay. And my second question is, what is the ordinance for having a dog and walking your dog and cleaning up after it poops?
What's the ordinance?
Yeah.
They're supposed to pick up their mess.
They're supposed to?
Yes.
Okay, well, we got a lot of dogs that walk-
Well, if you see them in action, if you know who it is, like other people have done, if people have said, listen, I've seen this person walking this dog, again, it has to be caught on the scene, and then somebody has to see it, I mean-
So if I take the picture of it?
If you take the picture, you know, and you know who the person was, okay, then you can file the complaint on it.
Okay, that's, that's all I wanted to know, because I'm kind of getting tired of all of that. Okay, thank you.
One more thing I will advise you, if you, they have a free app for noise decibel level measurement? If you could put them on, and then record it in case if the police come, they can look at the decibel that you recorded while you take it home.
Okay.
That will help in case too.
No, that's okay, my son can do that for me.
Anyone else? I would just like to touch on something that Melissa had suggested, which is about lowering the taxes. One of my suggestions is, we know that the values in Woodland have dropped, and yet our equalization ratio that we pay Camden County has not changed. So my suggestion is, is that the mayor and the council talk to Camden County and see if they will just recognize the decrease in values of Woodland and change our equalization ratio, so the amount of money we pay Camden County would be lessened. So that, that's one suggestion. The other suggestion is to try to make Woodland Avenue a county road. Wood, the borough Woodland has, we'll say half the county road, Ferry Avenue is a county road. Murchaville has 13 county roads, Haddonfield has 14 county roads, and-
Woodland Avenue would not qualify, we tried that before, and even when Drew Coyle
Woodland Avenue would not qualify, we tried that before, and even when Drew Boyle was mayor, we tried that, and the, the county would not address that as a county road. They do recognize Montefiore Avenue and Ferry Avenue as a county road.
Again, in terms of the raw taxes and some of the stuff that Melissa was saying, one of the reasons that Camden's taxes, look, somebody rose in Camden are, are county roads, so they're paying for the maintenance, they're paying for all these things that we pay for. I, 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 you know, I don't know how long ago Merrick Oil was here.
When you say what we pay for, for those county roads, what are you talking about? Can you be more specific?
Any maintenance that's gonna be going on, if, if it's repaving, or if it's drainage work...
We're not doing it, that's the county work. The county does those work, on those, on those county roads.
No, I'm saying on Woodland Avenue.
That's, that's not a county road, we...
I know, I'm suggesting we try to make one.
We fought that, and, and they, we didn't go through.
But it sounded like that was, how many years ago, if it was a Mayor Coil, I don't even know who that is.
Even, even with that, Jeff, I would say to you, even with that, it has to be a connecting, the connection for county road, and it's not, okay?
Well, again, I would just suggest that, that, that a dialogue be opened, because if that can be made a county road, that would help our taxes.
We have a good dialogue with the county, thank you. Anyone else? Motion to adjourn?
Mayor, here. I just wanna touch on something briefly. Hearing from the residents, the constituents, uh, you know, about the issue with the, the, uh, their taxes and everything, I had posed a question in a prior council meeting, I asked, uh, the question about the tax assessor. You know, his availability, um, the hours of his availability where, you know, um, he would reach out to residents, inform residents prior to showing up to their homes. Now, some of these constituents had an opportunity to have their properties reassessed, they went to court. And even in the, during the court proceedings, one of the questions that came up on many of the constituents were, they've never seen the tax assessor. So my thing is, is they, they're claiming they've never seen the tax assessor, and then half of the, uh, footage that was shown is outdated footage. So my thing is, is how can we sit up here and have a tax assessor go somewhere?
Before you start jumping the gun, you need to hear the tax assessor. See, you're hearing one side of the story, you need to hear it from the tax assessor. So why don't you meet with the tax assessor, because he's here every Tuesday at four forty-five to five forty-five. Those are after hours, so residents can come in and meet with him, okay? So, you've been here a year and a half, so obviously, why don't you go downstairs and see him? You know his schedule.
Well, this, no, this schedule was new to me.
But his schedule hasn't changed, those has been his schedule for years. So my thing is this, if you have the concern about it, councilman, why not just call the office and say, what time is the tax assessor gonna be around? Where is he available? We, we, we let them know, so for you to say what you're hearing on one side, there's always another story. So I would suggest that you sit down and talk to the tax assessor and hear him out, okay?
Give or take, mayor, I receive what you're saying, but at the end of the day, our constituents should know the availability of each and every position that is within the borough that is offering this service. If they wanna see the borough clerk...
And when people do call, okay, the office, they wouldn't, they tell us, and we tell them all the time, we talk to them. When you wanna talk to the tax assessor, you can come in here and meet with the tax assessor. He's here at this day, from this time to this time, okay?
Mayor, my...
You just asked me, you wanna let it assess, so I just said to you, so when people do call the office, they don't know when he's available, we tell them, okay?
All right, you're saying that, you know, you're allowing them to know the availability for each and every person that they need to reach out to. But even in my case, I, I have business cards that I give to my constituents, and when they try to reach out to me, they can't, because nothing has been updated as far as the telephone system.
What you mean, nothing's been updated towards the telephone?
If they call my number, they still get William Bell.
Well, council, you have to change it, that, that mailbox will give it to you. You're gonna complain a year and a half about your phone, your phone?
I've been complaining to you.
Shame on you, council, shame on you.
Mayor, I've been complaining to you, you're, you're...
You have been complaining to me. You're in charge of your phone, you know your password, you changed your voicemail.
Mayor.
I'm not gonna put your voicemail for you, okay?
I know my voicemail information.
Yes, you do.
We can set it up in front of the residents to prove the point, mayor.
Councilman, you are in charge of your voicemail.
Once again, mayor.
We all had to set up our own individual voicemail.
Do you want me to hold your hand and carry you to show you how to do it?
Mayor, unfortunately, no, because if I did that, then I wouldn't be able to get anything achieved in over the twenty-six years you've been here.
You know what, I've done more in one day than you've done in a year and a half.
You've done a terrific job, that's why everybody's taxes are high.
No, I think you on the school board raising the tax report, pickup truck, then we gonna need with a plow, when all guys were doing it, raising that taxes, it's you. Thank you. Anyway, next one, next, anything else? Anything else?
I like the new pickup truck we got, courtesy, I didn't know about it.
Well, you, but the budget, if you, if you look at your budget, it was in your budget, so obviously you don't wanna stand on budget. Next, anything else?
I was there at that meeting, and they did, all of them did a, a voting yes. And it is, and, uh, if you go in...
Someone who voted, you don't wanna tax, you're so taxing.
Same person. They were there, because I was reading all the amendments and everything on the computer for the years, for the four years in that year.
Someone who's got a taxpayer, loves to tax, spends taxpayer money.
Oh, I pay my share of taxes.
No, you don't.
You, you wouldn't believe it.
No, you don't. No, you don't. All right. Anyone else? Motion to adjourn? All in favor? Jeff, I have that package for you.